Testing, okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's organizational meeting of the Board of Education. We'd like to welcome back Kathy Lively, Mario Espinoza, and Anthony Giordano to our list of trustees for this school year. We're going to start with the organization of the school district's budget, I'm sorry, business functions for the 2021-2022 school year. Please know that the Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of the public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. Feedback and questions can be sent to the email account at boe@farmingdalschools.org. Questions will be provided to a central office administrator for response and to the Board of Education. In addition, public participation opportunities will be included at the beginning and the end of the 8:00 PM meeting, and we thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of a fire, or if you hear the fire bell, you have to leave the building. The nearest exit is the back of the room to the right. Can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
[Music]
Mrs. Lively, Mr. Giordano, and Ms. Espinoza, can you all please stand to take your oath of office? And our attorney, Risa Miles, will administer that to you? Okay, we're going to move on to nominations, please, for the president of the Board of Education.
I make a motion to nominate Michael Goldberg as president of the Board of Education for the 2021-2022 school year.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for presidents? There being no further nominations, we're going to have a roll call vote. After I call your name, please say aye or nay. Mrs. D'Amico?
Aye.
Mr. Espinoza?
Aye.
Mr. Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mrs. Sodi?
Aye.
Mrs. Lively?
Aye.
And Mr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you.
And now, we're going to do the vice president first, is that okay? Okay. Nominations for vice president of the Board, please.
I make a nomination for Suzanne D'Amico as vice president of the Board of Education for the 21-22 school year.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? Okay, so there being no further nominations, we're going to do a roll call vote again. Mr. Espinoza?
Aye.
Mr. Giordano?
Aye.
Mrs. Lively?
Aye.
Mr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mrs. Sodi?
Aye.
And Mrs. D'Amico?
Aye.
Congratulations, the ayes have it. And now, we're going to ask you to take your oath of office, if you could please stand up.
Does it stand up like the Apollo now, she's holding a mic, stand up like?
Who? Oh. Carry out the time. I, Michael Goldberg, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and to faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education of the Farmingdale Union Free School District, Town of Oyster Bay, Nassau County, and State of New York according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Suzanne D'Amico, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and to faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Farmingdale Union Free School District, Town of Oyster Bay, Nassau County, State of New York according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers.
Thank you.
The Board of Education will now act on a series of resolutions which are necessary to begin the work in the 2021-2022 school year. Resolutions include the appointment of specific positions, business contracts, audit functions, and insurance and legal firms. Vice President D'Amico, will you begin with the resolution to appoint the district clerk?
I make a motion to appoint Mary E. Rogers as district clerk for the 2021-2022 school year at an annual salary of $24,286.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion to appoint Patricia Solano as assistant district clerk for the 2021-2022 school year with a stipend of $377 per meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion for Brian Ernest to be appointed as the treasurer for the 2021-2022 school year at a salary of $13,502, and he is authorized to be the signatory on the Farmingdale Union Free School District checks. I'm sorry. And a facsimile signature of the treasurer may be used in accordance with the New York State Educational Law 1720.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion that Jean Buckley be appointed as deputy treasurer for the 2021-22 school year at a salary of $64.12 per hour and that she be authorized to be the signatory on Farmingdale U F S D checks in the absence of the treasurer and that a facsimile signature of the deputy trust treasurer may be used in accordance with the New York State Education Law Section 1720.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I make a motion that Rosemary Pearl be appointed as claims auditor at a salary of $9,667 for all Farmingdale Union Free School District funds for the 2021-2022 school year in accordance with the policy 6650 and to approve an agreement for audit services contingent upon a written contract, contracts, or addenda reviewed and approved by the district's council and to authorize the board president to sign the appropriate agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion that Ellen Carrigan be appointed as deputy claims auditor for the 2021-2022 school year for all Farmingdale Union Free School District funds at a rate of $47.46 per hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So the attorney will now administer the oath of office to the district clerk, assistant district clerk, district treasurer, deputy treasurer, claims auditor, and deputy claims order. Will these board officers please step forward?
Reiner.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and to faithfully discharge the duties of...
District Treasurer?
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service to the Board of Education and to the district. There are a number of appointments and actions that will be acted upon in a consent agenda format. Each resolution will be included in the minutes and recorded separately. Vice President D'Amico, may I have a motion to approve the organizational meeting consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the organizational meeting consent agenda items four, one through eighteen, five, one through seven, and six, one through fifteen, be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, the regular meeting of the Board of Education will reconvene at 8:00 PM.
If the newly appointed board officers can come up and sign the oath book, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. As we move into the second portion of tonight's agenda, you're reminded that the Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of the public to share their ideas, comments, and questions. Public participation opportunities will be available at the beginning and end of this meeting, and as stated in board policy, no person shall speak for more than three minutes, and each period of public participation will be limited to 30 minutes. If you have any questions or concerns regarding matters on the consent agenda through the Items for Discussion and Action, items one through four, it may be important for you to utilize the first public participation opportunity. You may also send your feedback and questions to us through our email account, boe@farmingdalschools.org. Questions will be shared with members of the central administrative team who will respond in a timely fashion. During special meetings, it is the policy of the Board of Education that public participation is limited to topics on the agenda only. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of a fire and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. Please use the nearest exit, which is in the back of this room to the right. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Defendini, can we have your monthly update, please?
For sure. Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Before I begin with my portion of the update, I'm going to introduce Don Hoffman from the district's internal auditing firm, an outside contractor who was scheduled to perform two different separate audits on the district's financial accounting. He's here tonight to provide the board with a summation of the findings of that report and to answer any questions that the Board of Education may have pertaining to said audits. Mr. Hoffman.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. As Paul said, my name's Don Hoffman. I'm a partner with the firm of Colin Danowski. We have been the district's internal auditor for a number of years now, and prior to that we were the financial auditor for the districts. We have a long history with the Farmingdale School District. As Paul mentioned, the internal audit function requires that we do two types of engagements each year. The first one we did last year was last winter. We did agreed-upon procedures looking into a couple areas of the operations. One was benefits administration, and the other was spending in the facilities department and accounting for capital projects. We did that work over the winter. I managed the engagement with a staff accountant. As with all of our engagements, we prepare a draft report. We meet with the audit committee to review the report. This year, that meeting was virtual. I've said in the past in these presentations that you have a very strong audit committee. You've got people who are in the industry, auditors. You've got prior bank auditors. So we have good, open discussions in the audit committee. Based on that meeting, we finalized the report. My understanding is that you've been provided copies of that report tonight or before tonight. The second engagement, which is required, is what's called the annual risk assessment. And the annual risk assessment is primarily interviews with some documentation of staff both inside and outside of the business office. And we make inquiries about process, procedures, internal controls, problems that they might be encountering, particularly as a related, over the past year, with COVID-related operations. You know, what's changed? What kind of budget impact did it have? What kind of internal control aspects did it have? That work was done in the spring. We met with the audit committee in June to review that report. It finalized the report, and my understanding is that you were provided with a copy of that report. In both of the reports, we found very, very few negative findings. We made a couple of recommendations in each of them for consideration of the district's to possibly improve internal controls, but the issues that we identified were not significant, would have no, you know, significant impact on the financial operations of the district. As always, the administration is now required to prepare a corrective action plan to address our findings. That corrective action plan should be approved by the Board of Education, and then it gets filed with the State Education Department through their filing system. Okay? I think you all had an opportunity to see the report. Did anybody have any questions about the work that was performed or the findings or recommendations in the report? No?
Any questions? No, I want to thank you, Don. Every year you're here, and every year you do a great job for the district.
Yep. No, it's our pleasure. We get excellent cooperation. It's a pleasure working with the staff here. This year was, had some challenges with working onsite and offsite to try and limit, you know, exposure to COVID and work under conditions. But like I said, we got great cooperation throughout the district, so it's my pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Just a few updates from me. The first, obviously and foremost, is congratulations to Kathy, to Anthony, and to Mario for their election to the Board of Education. Congratulations to the three of you. Congratulations to Mike and to Suzanne for your election to leadership positions on the board. It will be great working with you for the upcoming year. Also, a little bit of a special congratulations. We're very proud of our Board of Education and the amount of effort that they put into staying engaged. The number of our board members over the years have been presented with an award from the New York State School Boards Association about their moving up through the ranks. So for those of you that are aware, which most of you are because most of you are in a spot where you've received this award, I know Ms. Lively on a number of occasions has been in this spot specifically, two of our board members have moved into Level Two, and that's based upon participation in various conferences and workshops, legal meetings that happen at the school board level. It basically indicates your level of continued activity with the National and the statewide School Boards Association. So without further ado, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Mario Espinosa and Ms. Suzanne D'Amico for achieving Level Two status in the school board's eyes. I'm going to present them with their actual certificates, which we expect to be on the refrigerator by the end of the evening. And again, congratulations to the two of you, but again, thanks goes to the entire board, obviously, for all of the work that you do all year long in supporting the district in so many different ways. Your effort and your volunteerism is very much so respected and thanked by everybody in this community, no less me than anybody else. So thank you all very much. I'd also like to introduce somebody who the board had an opportunity to meet recently, our new director for Integrated Academic and Technical Studies, who is in the audience today to join us, Ms. Marisa Bell. She is being recommended, you know, later on this evening as part of the consent agenda for the board's consideration. Also like to mention, obviously, we haven't had a chance to talk since the year has been over, but it was a really incredible end to the school year. The moving up ceremonies, graduation, were incredible events. The numerous award ceremonies that took place across the district were absolutely incredible. We had a beautiful ceremony here at the end of the school year to thank and recognize our retirees and to congratulate our newly-tenured teachers. A new tradition that we will proudly continue to maintain by having a specific ceremony here in the courtyard to celebrate and thank them for their work. Had a chance to spend a little bit of time in the dunk tank again as part of our senior send-off. Mr. Goldberg was there watching me get dunked a number of times by our student body as part of the senior send-off, with thanks to the building administration and the advisors over at Farmingdale High School who did a fabulous job, really creating a great send-off moment for our students on that last day or towards those last days of school. A quick update on the summer program. Again, as the Board of Education's aware, we have four different programs right now that are running in the district. We have our extended school year program, our E&amp;L program. We have our credit recovery program over at Farmingdale High School, and we have our driver's education program that are all operating really well. Proud to say that all four programs are entirely live. There is no virtual program. We have all of our students that are attending that program live, which we're very happy about the fact that we have that level of contact. We know how important it is for our students to be here with us in person, and students and parents really took advantage of that as part of our summer programs. So again, we're very thankful and very appreciative to all the different people that have spent time with our students over the summer, making those programs a reality and keeping those programs, you know, pivotal to, you know, the kinds of services we provide to our students. Also, with thanks to the youth council program, who is, once again, figured out how to create a summer program for our students at all four elementary schools and our middle school. Had a chance to talk to both Ms. Lively, Mr. Giudano, about those programs at moments, but also to Tim McBride, who is the director of those programs. They're really doing a great job figuring out how to make that a reality under what was obviously very difficult circumstances. So with thanks to them for getting our kids active and moving and, you know, doing a great job over the summer. Two more. One is the Aquatic Center. Quick update on the Aquatic Center. It is going extremely well to this point, actually in some ways better than expected. We are actually finishing up, as the board knows, the steel portion of the project is already substantially complete, meaning all of the steel has been erected. The masonry component, the vendor who's doing and in charge of the masonry, will be finished on site this week. That mason will be substantially complete as well, which begins to obviously close the building in to allow some of the internal finish work to happen. They've handed the work off now to the contractors, specifically the carpenters, who are now going to start a lot of the steel studs and a lot of the internal work that needs to be done. All of the vendors that are associated with the mechanical operations, the electrical components, the plumbing, are all doing great as well. If you actually walked around the basement, which is something that you can't see from the outside, that is also substantially complete, meaning the basement and all of the different systems that we have down there to circulate the water, clean the water, return the water, the electrical systems, the heating systems are all fully operational at this point in time and will be turned on, obviously, when the pool is finally filled with water. But again, with thanks to all those in question that have a responsibility to that. The project is also on budget, so I know that that was a concern, obviously, with the current financial crisis that's happening in the construction industry. Costs obviously associated with materials have gone up dramatically. We were concerned about that, but the bidder is required to hold their prices based upon the date of the bid opening, which happened before. A lot of these things have become a reality, so the costs that we had originally budgeted are the costs that they're being held to, and we've had almost no change orders of any sort to this point. There might be a few little ones here and there, but again, you haven't seen any major cost changes from the original budget. So that's a very good sign, knowing that we're out of the ground and the building has already actually been structurally built. So to not have any change orders to this point is fantastic, knowing that we're already out of the ground. And the last piece that I'm going to finish up with is our September opening. Obviously, there's a lot of speculation about what September might look like for us. We, as the board knows, recently got some updated guidance from the State Education Department, specifically, I'm sorry, from the Department of Health pertaining to the way and the operation of the program as it needs to be fulfilled for the summer months. As we've done since the beginning, we've been following the Department of Health's recommendations. We have created mask optional environment. There's no barriers in any of our summer program classes. We're keeping the desks at three feet. There is levels of engagement that we have between the kids in group work-type environments, and it has gone really well so far. We're very pleased with the way in which everything has played out. We have a mix of kids, obviously, choosing to respond differently to these changing protocols, but again, it has played out well to this point, and we have no positive cases or anything to report out on our summer programs to this point. So that's also a good sign of where we are and where we hope to be. As we approach September, it is important to note that we have not received any guidance pertaining to September specifically. We are expecting that guidance. Hard to say exactly when that might arrive. We're hoping sooner rather than later. The last thing in the world you want is this thing to be dropped on your lap at the 11th hour, similar to how it was last year. We had to respond very quickly as it came very late in the summer. We're hoping that we get it a little bit earlier, but as per our conversation that we've had leading up to this moment, we do think it is important to reach out to some of our local officials, the Department of Health, the New York State Education Department, because we do believe that we have a lot to share, and we believe that we should be involved in the conversation pertaining to the details of what that plan might look like. We've had a year's worth of experience. Other districts have had experience now, having gone through this, and we think that we have some things that we can share that would help in providing the best kind of guidance that we can expect for September. We want to try to create, obviously, the most normal condition as we possibly can. We know that that's important. But what's pivotal, obviously, is also that we make sure that we have all of our kids that want to come back back. We want to do away with the hybrid, and we are planning entirely for a full return to, for our students to the school. We are planning right now at this juncture for a full return for normal operations around our sports programs, normal operations around our clubs, normal operations around our music program. Everything that we're building right now is predicated on having a normal opening in September, normal meeting what we would have seen in 2019. We want to be able to provide some insights to some of those key people who are ultimately going to be populating that guidance in advance of the actual guidance stocks being sent. So I will be reaching out to all relevant parties on our behalf to get ourselves involved in that process to some degree and to share with them some of the experiences we've had and what our recommendations might be with regard to that opening plan. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Defendini.
Thank you.
I'd like to open the meeting for the first public participation. Please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you come to the microphone, and please be mindful of the three-minute limit.
Good evening. Barbara Bood. My address is on file. I am also with Moms for Liberty, a national organization representing parental rights in our children's education. So today I want to talk a little bit about last September, when I came across the writings of a social worker employed here at Howitt. The first writing was "The Cult of Cop." In this, she describes the police force in America as a cult of racism, abuse, and power run amok. She states there is no way to fix what already exists, and the only option is to dismantle it and create a new system in its wake. The other article was "Undoing Whiteness," where she states, and I quote, "I am a mother of two white boys. They aren't just white, but pale, attractive, able-bodied, middle-class, well-traveled, educated boys who exude privilege." She goes on for several paragraphs describing her perception of white privilege. For myself and dozens of other parents, this was our wake-up call. This was our introduction to critical race theory. Prior to this, many had no idea what CRT was or that its intent is to indoctrinate children as young as kindergarten to judge their classmates based on race. We need to be lifting up our children with love and unity in our schools, but instead we are tearing them down by promoting hatred and division. Let me be clear: we are not opposed to teaching truthful history. We are opposed to labeling people as oppressors or victims solely based on the color of their skin. Parents must beware of terms like social justice, equity, diversity, inclusion. Those inherently good things are being used to disguise a biased political agenda to drive division and hate. Our issue is not with the teachers. I am the wife of a dedicated school teacher. This is about our school boards and administrators and whether or not they are doing and ensuring that what is being rolled out in our classrooms are aligned and approved by the parents of the district. Mr. Goldberg, when I asked where Farmingdale stands on CRT, you responded that there are absolutely no plans to incorporate this into our curriculums. Thank you. This is encouraging. It tells me we're not as far apart on issues as in some other districts. But you will hear shortly from a colleague of mine where there are some instances where this is happening, and we want to make you aware of it. Our community is small and tight-knit. We are all here to raise and protect our children, and I'm here today willing to sit on this side and work with you, or if needed, step up and sit on that side and to impact the changes that are needed. Parents are taking back responsibility. I truly believed I was an involved parent. I'm on the PTA. I volunteer for class events. I check my kids' homework, but most of us, if not all, were not paying attention to all of this. Until this year, I could not tell you who was on our school board or even what impact you have on my children's education. But this year has taught us a lot, be it mask mandates, school openings, or curriculum concerns, we, the parents, are wide awake.
Okay, Ms. Bood, thank you. The time is up at this point. Come back for the next session.
Good evening. My name is Donna Domingo. My address is on file. My daughter is a student at Saltman East Memorial. I had a situation not too long ago where she brought home a very inappropriate library book. I'll get into that. I was told by administration during a phone conversation that Farmingdale does not teach CRT. If that's true, why is the high school anthropology teacher teaching lessons on gender studies and assigning Black Lives Matter slide projects? Why is the middle school music teacher teaching a social justice lesson? Why are the social workers and teachers bringing their personal political beliefs into our children's classrooms? Why are social workers pushing into classrooms to tell our children how to feel and what to think? Why did my seven-year-old bring home a library book about oppression and racism, complete with illustrations depicting people holding up Black Lives Matter protest signs? The book, titled "Black is a Rainbow Color," was disguised as a book about rainbows with a beautiful little girl on the cover. I skimmed through the first few pages. I saw Dr. King. I thought it was wonderful. Then I got to the Black Lives Matter protest page. Then I got to the Black Lives Matter protest page with the fist. Black Lives Matter is a self-proclaimed Marxist organization. They stand for the destruction of the family unit and all of the other horrible aspects of communism. Why is it acceptable to promote communist beliefs in school? When I raised concern about the book, I was told that it had been carefully reviewed and deemed to be appropriate. If CRT and political issues are allegedly not supposed to be taught, but this book is appropriate, it makes me wonder whether there is a disconnect between the administration and the teachers, or if somebody is lying to us, the parents. My child does not see color. She sees her friends. Interestingly enough, my daughter is biracial. When will she come home and tell me that I'm racist and horrible because I am white? It's only a matter of time. I do not want my child indoctrinated. I should not have to be fearful of what she is learning in school. In reality, CRT is teaching children about racial differences and contributing to the division in this country. This topic should not be taught in schools, particularly when it seems to be taking away from valuable classroom time during which the students could be learning skills that will set them up for a successful future. Thank you for your time.
Jeff Roth. My address is on file. Speak for my three minutes. Please don't interrupt me. If you wish to respond to what I have to say, I'm sure the public would love to hear it. My comments now not directed at any administrators or to representation. It's directed directly at those members of the Board of Ed. Now, from where I left off from May 2018, we're talking about live streaming meetings. I guess you are now. I hope that continues. I asked for a time clock so we could see about the three-minute rule. I also asked for the three-minute rule to be changed to five minutes, since we don't usually have a high attendance of people speaking at the board meetings. We asked for a podium, too. You know, a lot of places you go, at least where you can put your papers down. So still requesting those. You did listen to my advice, and I noticed on the website, there's now biographies to all the members of the Board of Ed, although there are not the term limits when your term expires. So for example, a number of people in the community, they had no idea who was up for reelection this year, and this is now the second year nobody ran for board. Maybe I'll run for board one day, if I have the time. So let's see. What else here? Well, we're going to talk about your oath, which you just took. Now, there was a great quote from Simon Campbell out loud in Pennsylvania recently, and he talks about citing the 1964 New York Times versus Sullivan case. And I'm not sure if I have enough time left, but to quote it, he said, "Thus we consider this case against the background of a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials." You're the Board of Ed. You're the boss of the administrators. You're elected by us, the taxpayer. We're your boss. Now, you took an oath swearing just now to swear to support the United States Constitution to the best of your ability. Well, let me tell you something. I'm going to school you on the next public session on how it wasn't to your best of ability, because you violated my constitutional rights four times of freedom of speech and due process. And this started when Kathy and Michael were on the board, but it continued to the rest of the board members. You allowed it to continue, and it continues on to this day. And listen, I've been doing this since 1990. What makes you think I'm going to stop anytime soon? So with that said, I look forward to the second public speaking portion.
Hi, my name is Kevin McKenna, and I live at 3 Edna Drive in Sayosset, New York. And I'm here representing Town of Oyster Bay News, which is a widely-followed Facebook page on social media. And the reason that I came here tonight is because many, well, not many, three residents from the Farmingdale School District, because they're aware of the fact that I go to various meetings and I livestream. I was asked to come here tonight because I guess they were under the impression that you don't live, that you didn't live. I was under the impression, I was told, that you don't livestream your meetings. And the only reason I just came here to speak is the gentleman before me just mentioned that you are livestreaming the meeting. Is that the case?
It is being livestreamed.
It is being livestreamed. Okay.
Behind you.
Great. Is tonight the first meeting that it's being livestreamed?
This is the first meeting that's being livestreamed.
Okay. Was that announced to the public that you are going to livestream tonight?
Mr. DeFandini was on the website, correct.
All right, great. So everyone listening right now, I have 14,000 followers in the Town of Oyster Bay. About 600 of them are in the Farmingdale School District. So now they know that your meetings are being livestreamed. They're on your website?
The announcement's on the website.
Okay. And it's fortunate for you, because you won't have to see me again if they're being livestreamed, because what I'll do is just take your link and I'll share it to the rest of the town. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I call for a motion to approve the May 25th board minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 25th, 2021 special meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the June 2nd regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 2nd, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I call for a motion to approve the June 4th special meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 4th, 2021 special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
So the board received quite a bit of correspondence. I'm going to summarize for you. There were a number of emails from parents and other organizations regarding loosening mask protocols. This was back in June. You also received an email, actually, several emails regarding the diversity curriculum as was talked about at public participation. You received, actually, requests from a parent regarding a student's application to the Bosse's Performing Arts Program. You had several emails regarding the support that people had for the Board of Education and administrators following the June 2nd board meeting that was adjourned. You had gotten several requests from board, I'm sorry, from district residents regarding a letter-writing campaign to Governor Cuomo and other elected officials. And then you had received a FOIL request for copies of old office and a number of other items, which were all responded to by the Board of Education. I think I got them all.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the board?
I don't have any committee reports, because I want to thank Mr. DeFandini for filling us in on everything that had happened in the last month or two with Youth Council and all the other committees that were on. So I thank you for that. I'm good.
Right. I don't think there are any direct committee reports. You know, I want to thank the administration and Mr. DeFandini, of course, for having a great closure to a really, really rough school year. The moving up ceremonies, the high school graduation at HASTRA, Senior Day, there were so many events that we tried to recapture, and it's a great job by everybody. It was in a very rough year this year. So looking forward to next year, and great job this year.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Goldberg. And again, as you know me well enough, I'm passing that down to the team. The team that's here at this table, the administrators, the teachers, the support staff members, it has been an unbelievably remarkable year. That, to me, was largely, vastly largely, positive. People stepping up and doing all kinds of things in order to make magic happen throughout the school year. I don't know that there was any more than a handful of opportunities that were not provided to our students through some means or another. It was different. It might not have been how it always looked, but they did a great job, and I give all the credit in the world to the team, the advisors, and all the people in the trenches that did the work to make this a possibility. They were remarkable, and we are forever in their gratitude for the effort that they put forth this year. And let's just hope, you know, we have a far better year in 2122. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As a father of a senior, and Mr. knows a senior, and we're all parents here, I can't tell you how rough it was in the beginning, and the fact that the school was able to do what they did was just phenomenal. Thanks to all central administration, the teachers, the staff, you know, custodial, clerical, security, everybody had a part in this year. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 1A through I, 2A through D, 3A through G be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Goldberg, can I just jump in?
Oh, yes, of course.
So again, as we always do, right, the Board of Education makes one sweeping motion, approves a whole bunch of stuff that people necessarily don't understand. We have two people in the audience that I'd like to recognize who were just approved by the Board of Education. Mr. Chris Waska, science teacher at Howitt Middle School. And Bianca Saraniero, science teacher at Howitt Middle School, will be joining us on a permanent basis starting this September. Congratulations to the both of you. Look forward to working with you.
Congratulations. Welcome to the Farmingdale family. Can I have a motion to accept the risk assessment update report and corrective action plan for the 2020-2021 school year?
I make a motion that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education accept the risk assessment update report completed in the 2020-2021 school year and to approve the corrective action plan for the risk assessment update report.
Second.
Mr. Motisi.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. In tonight's agenda is the risk assessment and corrective action plan related to the work that Don Hoffman discussed earlier. This year, there was one continued recommendation to improve certain controls over the fuel usage system. As you are aware, we did install a more updated and more efficient fuel reconciliation system, and this recommendation helps us to improve controls. We are in complete agreement and have already implemented the necessary controls over this process.
Thank you, Mr. Motisi. Any questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to open the meeting for the second public participation. Please state your name and address clearly when it's up to the microphone, and once again, please be reminded of the three-minute time limit.
Address on file. Thirty-minute public speaking portion, and only one person wants to speak for three minutes, and then that's it? I still, I can only get three minutes to speak? That doesn't sound right to me. So to finish, Simon Campbell, one of his quotes to his Board of Ed, said, "I don't have to be nice to you. I tried to be nice to you years ago, previous board, and you know what? You just didn't like what I had to say." So now, let me go for example this. You're speaking about all these construction projects. You have the asbestos removal going on, et cetera. What happened to the Facilities Advisory Committee? And in other districts, the agenda is not controlled by the administration and/or when deciding when meetings should be held, it's decided by the committee. And you haven't had one Facilities Advisory Committee meeting in I don't know how many years. And I don't know if you get me started. You finally did start the Safety Advisory Committee, but you still haven't started the Facilities Advisory Committee. Now, maybe you can answer, because if you had committee meetings, I would know. In 2013, 2012, this was brought up when you're doing the Energy Performance Contract. If you're going to be installing air conditioning in your auditoriums along with LED stage lighting, you might have done some of it or been planning on implementing it. The issue is, because in event of emergency, you also wanted to be an emergency cooldown center. There's also backup generators, et cetera. I heard some stories that you were getting once. But so, you know, four times you decided to suspend me because, one, you just didn't like my opinion, or maybe you didn't like the way I look, or maybe you didn't like the tone of voice. Maybe if I came down and I had a southern accent, you'd appreciate that more. But you suspended me four times, which in essence was violating my constitutional right of freedom of speech, entry, and due process. Yet you just swore your oath to enforce the United States Constitution, yet hypocritically, you violated somebody's rights four times, four times. I demand your immediate resignation, all of you, because obviously you don't understand what goes on. We're your boss. So let's see here. Never once in all those times that I was allegedly disturbing the meetings and recording it, but now you're finally getting around to livestreaming it. So it was your opinion that I was disturbing a meeting, which you thought abusing your power gave you the right to suspend me, okay? But never once did you have to adjourn a meeting because I was disturbing it so much. No offense to the parents that had the issue with the masks, and you adjourning that meeting. That was so disturbing? You suspended me four times, four times.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
You settle. Otherwise, this is going to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Oh, it's going to get worse.
Thank you, Mr.
Until I bring up things about teachers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roth. Would anyone else like to be heard this evening? Ma'am, just please step to the mic.
Hi, my name is Pamela Valenti. My address is on file. I have two daughters in the Farmingdale School District. One is at Northside, one is at Howitt. When we moved to this district over 15 years ago, one of the things that impressed me was the school scores and the town and the community and everything else, but I have to say I am extremely, extremely concerned about our ranking. While as a teacher myself, I know that there are a lot of factors that go into those rankings. I have been going to many meetings throughout the years, never to a board meeting, so thank you, Moms for Liberty, for waking me up, because I'm going to be here from now on. I am concerned about those children's futures, because to have one child in a school that's a two and another in a school that's a three out of 10 is embarrassing and appalling. And I've been told things are going to get better. We're doing more. We're doing better. But what are you doing, though? I'm hearing about the initiatives for the fields, for the pool, for the this, for the that, but I'm not hearing about curriculum initiatives. So perhaps I'm missing that memo. Perhaps I can have a discussion with Jen Olson, but the fact is, what's going on right now in Farmingdale needs to change, or we're going to have to move or request outside placement. Farmingdale is better than this, but I don't know what is going on, whether it be poor oversight, whether it be poor curriculum choices, like the Columbia Teachers College Program, which is horrific and expensive and continues to be used despite its failure. And the own founder, Lucy Calkins, admitted that that is not an appropriate way to assess and teach reading and writing, and yet that's continuing in our district. So I think that we can do better. I know that we should do better for our children, for our town, for our taxpayers, our real estate value, and all of those things. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Kevin McKenna again, and I live at Edna Drive in Sayosset. And I just want you to know that I changed my mind, and I'm going to come back again, because this is a very, very interesting meeting, and I'm sure that my 14,000 followers want to hear comments that come forth, especially from that gentleman that apparently has had some issues with you guys. So we want to make sure that the public hears what's really going on. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay.